I don't have Lucian yet.
Uh, we're working.
Lucian, can you hear me?
Working on Lucian.
Oh, there we go.
I can hear you.
Ready to hear me? Let's try again. Test, test, one, two, three. Go ahead.
Alright, can you hear me?
Yeah, that's better.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. If you want to mute until you need to talk, that would be great.
Those are not on speakers.
They're not what?
Those are not on my phone.
Listen, I already got flack about my mask. Now I'm getting flack on my speakers.
So it's just after six and I'm gonna call the regular select board meeting to order. We do have Lucian on remotely. He's dialed in. And there was a Zoom option, but I believe no one took advantage of the getting the Zoom credentials. Is that correct?
That's right. That's great. Yeah.
Okay. So, so it's us. First thing is set adjust agenda. Does anybody have anything to add, change?
We need to approve of the two public hearing meeting, uh, minutes.
Oh, yeah. Where is the minutes, minutes, minutes? Yes, I got, okay, I'll do that. Anything else, though? Everybody ready to roll with what we got then? Alright, so, first thing is select board to approve a whole slate of minutes from last time. So we had two public hearings. Maybe we could do those. So there's a public hearing for the fire truck bond vote and a public hearing for the DuVine expansion bond vote. Could we maybe have a motion to approve those?
I see the time.
Yeah, both of them.
So move, say.
Any discussion on these? Those are very short, short meetings and short minutes. Or shorts, sorry, they weren't, they were, whatever they were, not meetings, uh.
Hearings.
Public hearings. Alright, so all in favor of approving the minutes as written for both those public hearings, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Uh, Lucian, did you vote aye on that?
Aye.
Okay, so that's everybody. So motion carries. The next, how about a motion to approve the minutes from our last regular meeting, which was the same day just later?
So move.
Uh, so discussion, do people have anything to change on those minutes from our last meeting? Hearing, nothing. All in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
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 Lucian.
Did you need a second on that or?
Oh, did we get, did we not get a second?
I just looked at you. I didn't actually say it, so.
I'll look like.
Or.
There we go. Kaylee wants a second on that. Alright, and we had all ayes, I believe. So, any opposed? Motion carries. So we've approved those as well. Next is communication from the audience. And we're, we're, last time we had an audience, which was great. To be encouraged. This time it's a little thin on the floor. Uh, next is town managers' report. So Sean Fielder, tell us what you've, your office has been up to.
Okay, um, sorry, just had the page and I lost it. So bear with me just a second. Okay, the, uh, we did, uh, just recall, select board, um, did authorize going forward in the past, the wastewater sludge cleanout project. And that is completed as of the first part of October. And we did hit the, uh, the goal going into this was 100 metric tons, which was a high majority of the sludge that was in the back lagoon, if you will. Project went really well. The weather cooperated, um, drawdowns worked well. With the water lowered in that particular lagoon at the wastewater treatment facility, the crew, with some support from Vermont Rural Water Association, did remove some old piping and infrastructure. And that's gonna allow for, uh, we're gonna have to do sludge cleanouts ongoing with this particular facility. So that's gonna facilitate a more efficient and effective process that's a little bit more economical moving forward. So we, everything went really well there. We're starting to get our levels back. And, um, you know, appreciate the efforts of, it was Senna Sack doing the support and then Ken and Edward, Ken LaCast doing the majority of the work here managing the project. And again, it went really well. I think we did a really good job on this.
Uh, that's great.
Yeah, it is. Uh, we have, uh, this last week, I received an update from our, the engineering firm A and E. We had a preliminary engineering report that they are working on as authorized by the select board. They're doing a comprehensive inspection of the wastewater treatment facility. Uh, this was basically a 60% report is what they call it. So anticipate, um, A and E representatives taking part in the September 3rd select board meeting, where they can give, uh, probably a 90% report is what it would be referred to. So we're nearly done with their report preparation. They can update everybody on some of their findings, uh, give us the summary, give us the recommendations, what their suggestions are. We'll have more here as we move forward. The big picture is, um, they're hoping to be able to present to us, um, and then say, look, if you want to do improvements moving forward, you're gonna have to get yourself in the queue with the Department of Environmental Conservation. Uh, you know, it'd be select board authorizing this and community being involved. Uh, there is some grant support, but to get the project done, we're likely looking at a bond vote moving forward. So, that's it. I don't want to get too far ahead because we've got to wait to get the report from A and E. The good news here is that Vermont D E C has already indicated to us, uh, whatever those expenses are gonna be, we're gonna get a 40% grant, so that's pretty significant. Again, I don't want to get too far ahead. Did coordinate on helping set up Zoom meeting coordination with Greensburg, Greensboro Select Board member and Chief Cochran, uh, next Wednesday, 26th of August, from 6:00 until 7:00, Hardwick P D Community Conversation. Again, that's a Zoom-based meeting. So it'll be Chief Cochran and his officers, uh, just offering up some commentary to folks interested about, you know, here's how we're policing, here's how we go about doing the process. So, we appreciate Greensboro's efforts. Uh, Chief's been working on this with his crew and team. And again, that's gonna be next Wednesday. We're in the process of getting the information up on the town's website and we will also share on Front Porch Forum. So anybody in it who is interested in that, uh, we aren't doing a broad broadcast on the passwords for the Zoom bombing issue that can occur, but they would be in touch with Chief Cochran and then he could relay how you get involved with the meeting. So, I don't know if you want to offer anything, Chief, on this right now?
The only other thing that, you know, the date and time, uh, I've had one email that came in today asking, you know, for the password.
Sure.
So that went out. Uh, other than that, you know, they can call the, call the office. I did put the email out to the officers, whoever, as long as they speak with an officer, not necessarily dispatch of a lawyer, uh, they can get the password from, you know, any officer. It doesn't have to be me or only when I'm there, so.
So, uh, appreciate Chief's efforts on this to get this rolling. You know, recall that, um, I think it was about six or seven weeks back, Hardwick Community approached us about, we want to just do this, just to talk and meet with P D. And, you know, obviously we have a contract with Greensboro for police services, so this is an important thing for us to be involved with, so appreciate it.
Actually, Ken, actually, we'll probably be one of the first in the state to actually do something like this. The Chiefs, uh, put out, um, did a training today, did some press release stuff as well. And they're actually pushing for something like this to happen four times a year, you know, by departments. And it's just kind of to get to know everybody and how things work and so on. Uh, so they're actually, the Vermont Associated Chiefs of Police is actually hoping that departments would try to do this four times a year. Four times a year is a lot. Maybe twice a year would be easier, uh, to try and do every six months or something. But, but they're, they're actually looking at what we're already, um, planning on doing, so.
Okay. Anything else you want to offer right now on that? Okay, um, I have arranged, uh, select board members, uh, I think most, hopefully most community members are aware, the suspension bridge down off Main Street, uh, had a problem with the cable that was reported to us last Friday. So, uh, based on what I saw there, uh, made the determination to do a closure. Uh, we did have, um, a representative from Blow and Cody just do a quick look at this earlier this week. And they concurred that at this time, probably, you know, it'd be best to keep it closed. I've moved forward with arranging for a engineering bridge consultant to be here next week to give us a conditions assessment. And then we'll have the report to know, okay, are we into repair, replacement? You know, what do we got going on here, just as a foundation item? So it's gonna remain closed for some time, you know, until we get this information from our engineers. And then as a group, meaning select board involved, figure out, okay, you know, what are we gonna do for our next step, sir? Any questions on that? Okay.
Uh, what we have to do.
Yeah, and, uh, Wiz sent a picture through today. Uh, the original dates from 1907, if I'm not mistaken, maybe 1908? 12, okay, thank you. Um, and I know there was a retrofit, I guess, Tom and I think maybe what, 20, 25 years back, there was a retrofit. So the infrastructure, all of it, isn't original from 1912. But the retrofit from 20 years back, uh, there's things that need to be improved. I mean, that's where we're at. So we'll just have to take the information and then figure out, okay, what are we doing for next steps? But it's gonna be a little bit of time, I can guarantee this, where we're gonna have that closure in place. Okay?
So, I had a question about that. I thought I texted it to you, but I didn't hear anything.
No.
I asked Eric about it. There, there, and there was a period of time where it was considered part of the bike path.
Yep.
You know, so if we do have to do some kind of big thing, that certainly should be, uh, considered as a resource if there's anything left in there.
Sure.
Um, and Rob Lewis did a bunch of work on it, but it was more the railings, I guess, and the decking or whatever?
Sure.
So it wasn't anything structural, maybe?
The bike path, no, it's gone. Cause I think we used the last of it, I think going up by the elementary school up through there, I believe.
Oh.
When we did the sidewalks and the lights and stuff.
Yeah.
But the blank, when we talk about the blank path, we don't actually mean a bike path.
Correct.
What we mean is a federal earmark that was intended to make a bike path, which was never built.
Right.
So, um, there is, so if the, the question is, is there money left on that earmark? Some of that money is being used to do the parking lot behind the depot and the townhouse and a little, that little section of rail trail. Um, but that probably won't use all of it. I don't remember what's left on there, but.
But there's a little bit more.
I think there will be a little more.
Because it is part of, it's, you know, the Daniels Road.
It was used.
The whole thing with.
It was a.
Putting the.
Yeah.
The bumpy things and that new piece of sidewalk at the bottom of Highland Avenue. And then when Dan Hill had the lights put up on Daniels Road and then the little piece of sidewalk by the Daniels Building and then it went across. And that's when the, when the crosswalk got those, whatever those bumpy things are that are, yeah, like traction or something like that.
Oh, no, the organic.
Okay.
Where the cane, so they could feel.
So, for rolling, yeah. Anyway.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, definitely that's type of, and just sidewalks and bridges are, have been in the past, approved uses of that money.
And then, uh, I think the other thing about that is that, um, I think it does, it broadens, you know, if we can maybe seek out grant support or bring some funding support. If we talk about, you know, it's, it's in this capacity pedestrian bike traffic, you know, probably opens up another set of opportunities for funding, depending on what we get from reports moving forward.
And then whether there's any historic stuff. I mean, it's. Odd as it is, it's sort of a little attraction that we have.
Yep.
I mean, a lot of people.
Very cool.
A lot of people really enjoy that, taking their kids over there and stuff when they're in town.
The, uh, we did, uh, just real quick, added, uh, just a quick narrative of the go-around. And it's basically, uh, it's approximately a four to five minute walk, in case anybody is curious about. You go up to North Main Street, turn onto Highland Ave, a short, short section of Brush Street, and then that little spur of Daniels to get you to the parking lot. I know it's an inconvenience, but you still have the opportunity to park and go around. It's not ideal, but it is an opportunity still. Okay, I have received email notice from a consultant working on behalf of a A T and T that they had filed a Section 106 Information Review with the Public Utility Commission. Uh, this is, uh, just a part of a normal application process. This is in reference to the A T and T tower proposed for Buffalo Mountain. Uh, just for everybody's recollection, the last set of conversations that we had on this particular project is they had done a, uh, pre-notice that they were planning to file a complete application with the Public Utility Commission. At the local level, uh, we were still waiting to hear if they had verified with the Hardwick Electric Department, if the project, uh, or the, uh, plans would be able to meet the Hardwick Electric Department construction standards. And the important thing for everybody to be aware of right now is we don't have, I checked with H E D today. We still don't have any feedback from A T and T or their consultants that they are in a position with what is being proposed to meet the construction standards. So that still is not a yes or a no at this point. I think they're, uh, just, you know, with a bigger project, it's not uncommon to be working some of these parallel issues. So they did put us on notice and that is provided at this time. There's nothing more to report on the A T and T project. That's it. That's for status.
I just want to ask, is, uh, so Section 106's historic preservation is, is it just, are they doing that just because they, everybody has to for a similar project? It's not that there's something historic that we're aware of?
My understanding is it's because it's, uh, just for a project of this type, it's a requirement. It's a checkbox requirement. That's correct statement. It's not unique to this particular project.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, uh, just a couple of comments on, uh, I'm sorry, are there any other questions on the A T and T issue? Okay, and then, uh, just a couple of things on the LaMotta Valley rail trail progress. Um, you know, we've been able to see some progress continuing in the middle of the pandemic, as we've seen in our town and other projects, and this is really good. So, uh, for the Creamery project, which is the section from North Main to Slap Hill, we do have a notice of award, uh, provided, and that is to Cath, Capital Earth Moving. This is for everything by the Creamery Town Garage Area, if we will, if you will. We have a pre-construction meeting, uh, most likely occurring in the first part of September. So we're gonna see the construction coming on this section and completion this fall. Bridges 39 and 40, which are the two bridges out to the east, are completely done. And they look amazing. And this is really a significant progress, step forward. VAST led these up with support from N B R C, so really good to see those completed. It's really helping us in the town of Hardwick have, uh, you know, some significant portions of this trail completed. This is gonna be a good thing for us moving forward. People are gonna be, you know, even in the middle of pandemic, they're, they're seeking out recreational opportunities. And this is right in that wheelhouse. And this is important for our economy. So it's, my strong opinion is a good thing here. We have continued communications. A town-led project is our L V R T Improvement Project. That's the section from Slap Hill to Pumpkin Lane. We're still waiting for some checkbox items from V Trans so that we can then get the clearance from Vermont U S D A to go forward with a bidding process for the section from Slap Hill out to Pumpkin Lane. Um, I, we're working that and, uh, you know, we're not sure at this phase if this section's gonna be, you know, totally completed in 2020 or it's gonna roll into 2021. But we're doing our best to keep things rolling here. I, uh, had the opportunity to today to just go ahead and look at the sections all the way from Slap Hill out to East Hardwick beyond 16 with Michaud's Farm. My opinion is there's a couple of other spots that we're aware of that with some basic improvements, we've got a path now that goes from here out as far as Greensboro Bend that could be used. It's not perfect, but it could be used and it's passable. And with some mowing and some tree, uh, trimming, um, you know, even as early as this fall, if folks want to bring a family and come bike or walk, they can. And that's good. So that's what I have on the L V R T. We're working through the process on this U S D A funded project. That's what I have for items for this evening.
Sean, I have a really good question.
Yeah.
There is now by the, um, I guess it's Bridge Number 40, which is by the S curves.
Yep.
A really nice parking lot?
Yep.
Is that available for folks to use? Is that town?
It's V Trans, isn't it?
State-owned.
Okay.
And there's nothing that would prevent somebody from parking there to, you know, whatever, whether they're, you know, fishing over the bank or using the rail trail. So it is V Trans land. There's a little sliver that's a little bit unknown, but generally it's okay if folks want to park there and use the rail trail. Lucian, could you hear Kaylee's question?
I know, I couldn't hear it.
I'm sorry, I'll repeat then. Her question just was, could folks use the parking, uh, slot that's up in the corners to access the rail trail? And the answer was yes, that's V Trans, uh, location.
So I just wanna.
Is that where they're, 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 did you go to work on that second bridge?
Yeah, they're actually, uh, it's done. So the answer was yes. And that is where they were staging. That's correct statement.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yep.
Um, just a couple other things to just follow up on the rail trail. Just a shout out to the town road crew for helping out with the ramps on that bridge that where the deck ended up a foot and a half higher of the trail.
Should've brought that, thank you for bringing this up.
And, um, you're, uh, in addition to VAST using, um, funds from the Northern Borders Regional, um, Commission, there were, uh, I think there was $50,000 in local, um, uh, contributions private, that private folks made to make that possible to get that done. So that was a, it's a pretty big deal. Um, alright, thank you.
That's all I have.
Uh, next is road foreman's report. Tom, tell us about the, uh, road crew. I know you, I've seen a lot of, a lot of grading and ditching and hydroseeding.
Hydroseeding, yes. Uh, we spent two days hydroseeding. Uh, we got Tucker Brook and, uh, oh, was it out, out through Macville area? I think the boys went up through, out through, uh, Nick, Nichols Way and got that done. Uh, we ended up finishing up with sand. Uh, we ended up, uh, changing tires on the dump trucks. Uh, we ended up doing some more grading up towards, uh, uh, the northern part of our S section, which is up towards, uh, Dimmick Road that way. Uh, we ended up spending, uh, a full day on Montgomery Road, kind of redoing that entire road up through there. So now we have stay mat from the bottom of the intersection of Hardwick Farms to the very top of the hill. Uh, got that well packed down and then we put gravel up farther, uh, up towards the northern part of it. So we spent an entire day there. Of course, we had to stop by over here. We didn't know whether it was gonna interfere with the rail trail work. So we figured, you know, it'd be a good place to, you know, build up the road and stuff. So we got that whole area done over there.
That looks really nice, by the way. Happy to go through there today.
So hopefully it's packed good. We put the chloride right to it, so.
Seemed to pack, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, crushers showed up today, so they should start crushing gravel tomorrow morning. Uh, so next week, if, uh, weather holds good and stuff, we'll see us on the roads there dumping gra, gravel all throughout the town and stuff. Uh, we spent two days hot mixing, uh, getting our areas ready, uh, west end area and up on, uh, West Hill. You know, all patched up and stuff, so we don't have no divots in the hot, hot mix. So when they pave, uh, did a couple of other, other area spots in the village here. And then we spent the other 12 ton, the following day, from the top of Slap Hill going up Center Road. And we made it all the way to just past Hardwick Farms in that dip right there, as far as we made it with 12 ton. Uh, besides that, uh, we've been getting equipment ready, you know, for winter. We were not, it's coming, cause September's almost here.
You gotta bring that up now, really?
Yep, yep. You gotta get prepped and ready, cause we probably got a month and a half or hopefully a little bit longer work left to do. But, uh, looked at Pearlie's new truck today. That's coming along. But of course, it's same old scenario with that. They're gonna be waiting on dump bodies, but the truck should be completed and sitting outdoors along with the rest of them in line, probably next week or the week after. And they just, just gotta sit and wait for dump bodies. So, besides that, about it, I guess.
Questions for Sean?
Of course, you already covered the rail trail work. We did, so I didn't, I didn't mention that, so.
And Montgomery Road did really look good when I went there. I was going up and I was like, ah, gravel didn't come out of our pit.
Some did.
Looked too nice. Yeah, right down to the bottom, it was.
Yeah.
Yeah. And up the hills, yeah.
I don't know whether this is the right time. I mean, uh, we're gonna have to do something with the gravel pit too. But we're gonna find out this year after getting done crushing, whether we have another year or two left in there. Uh, the sections that we cleaned off this year, that we bold dozed off, where we thought we had quite a, quite a good area, we actually dug some more test holes. We were down 15 feet and we were still hitting sand. So I think the sand has fallen the ledge down through. So we're starting to get narrowed up on our, on our gravel right now. So just give you a heads up on that, so. And after that, I don't know what we're gonna do.
We don't know, yeah. And, um, right, so we should probably start as a, as a group. We need to, um, think about making a plan for what happens. I didn't realize we were that close.
Well, we didn't neither, because when we dug test holes, of course, everything was still all woods up there. So you could poke your way through when we dug test holes and stuff. But then after this year, after we finally got that whole entire section cleared off, we dug some more test holes and the area that we were hoping where the gravel was, half of it ended up turning, turning into silt sand, so.
Okay. We have, in the, uh, occasionally gravel pits come up for sale. We had one a couple of years ago that somebody wanted us to take interest in and we passed on it. Um, and just generally, I think, uh, it's been a long time since I looked, but, um, last time I looked, it seems to me that it costs us roughly half the cost of buying gravel to get gravel out of our own pit, something like that.
Right now, if we were to go by today's price for the regular 7,000 yards that we crush up in the pit, we pay, we, excuse me, we pay somewhere around 30, 32,000, I think, to have it crushed for 7,000 yards. If we were to go buy.
And we also, but we also have a crew up in there. We have some, we have some labor into that.
No, we don't.
We don't?
That's all, they take away, they pile it and everything for us now.
Oh, they do?
Yes.
Okay, cause you used to have.
We used to have a loader and a guy up there, yes. Uh, so if we were to go buy that 7,000 yards, we would probably be looking somewhere around $100,000.
Okay, so it's about thirds of price.
Yep.
But we typically, when we go buy gravel, we get better material.
Stay mat and gravel are almost close to being the same price. So that's why when we go get gravel, we get stay mat.
And the stay mat, it seems to work a lot better, lasts longer between grading?
Yep.
Yeah. So anyway, it's a whole conversation that we'll need to have. Alright, so thank you for bringing that up.
Yep.
I need to think about it. Alright, uh, next up, Hardwick Police Department report, Chief Cochran.
Alright, you do have the report of incidents for July.
Yep.
Uh, 193 incidents. Didn't have it recorded for last, I needed those catching up from getting back. Uh, so 193 incidents, uh, for the month of July. One of the things, first things I'll bring up, it's also on here, but, um, is a new officer appointment we have. And I just wanted to talk about, you know, the officer a little bit. He, uh, he came to us, um, through our, we, we had the opening, obviously, with Officer Stellar, um, you know, having to leave and go back, uh, with his family. So we had that opening. Uh, this, this officer came to us, who is already full-time certified, uh, has two years, uh, worth of experience, uh, as a full-time certified officer. So we're quite fortunate to have him, uh, looking for a change. Uh, he's a veteran of the, uh, of the air guard, uh, also lives nearby. And, uh, he's at.
Yep, sorry, folks. There we go. Sorry?
Educationally, other than the, uh, than the, uh, uh, full-time certification, he also holds two, two different bachelor degrees. So, uh, he was looking for a change, uh, from where he was, uh, looking to expand out, uh, from what he was doing as an officer. And, uh, so he applied with us and we interviewed, vetted, investigated, everything that we do. And, uh, was a good, good choice, recommended by, um, several officers in the department, um, you know, to me, so. Um, so I just wanted to, you know, bring that up. I know it's an, it's a, uh, article on the minutes, but. Um, and yeah, public forum update, Sean already talked about. Uh, I don't know if anybody thought of any questions in the, in the meantime between that first part, but, um.
I have one that, um, and I'm not, uh, so I'm just wondering if you guys, uh, have given thought to how to, um, kinda keep the meeting moving, like the virtual meetings can be difficult, um, I think, to manage. Like when we were having virtual meetings, um, and some of the Zoom meetings I'm still doing, like when someone kind of starts stopping, they sort of have control. And I'm just wondering if maybe you'd want to do a format where people have to. Like the virtual meetings can be difficult, um, I think, to manage. Like when we were having virtual meetings, um, and some of the Zoom meetings I'm still doing, like when someone kinda starts stopping, they sorta have control, and I'm just wondering if maybe you'd wanna do a format where people have to, yeah, like text in their questions instead of stating them, or I don't know.
That's a good point. We did, we did ask uh, that anybody can, you know, email questions ahead of time.
Yeah.
As well. Um, that is in the notice.
Yeah.
And it would be extremely helpful. Uh, to do that, uh, we do have a, uh, an agenda uh, made up as to opening comments, um, and kind of how the, it's, it's planned to flow.
But it, but it, the agenda, uh, was an hour, and it looked like you, you could take up a fair amount of that time just kinda describing how you work.
Sure.
And I was just thinking to make the questions go, if people email on before, that's excellent, that's probably the best thing. But if people have questions during the meeting, if they could, if they're on a computer, they can text them through Zoom.
Or put them through the chat.
That's what I mean, yes, sorry, the chat.
Right.
On Zoom.
I know Sean was volunteering PVA for technical advice.
Oh.
I was just thinking, open it. Yeah, but trying to just make sure to come as a moderator, just for some of these issues.
Yeah, okay, great.
So we can uh, keep it on the clock and just, you know, try to keep, okay, if something does come through, we have been thinking about this. Actually, Gary and I talked about this, the representative, a support member from Greensboro, so we had been thinking about it. We didn't necessarily nail the process completely, but I believe we'll have a decent process in place. We'll have time for folks if they have questions. Uh, Gary and I did talk about this particular issue, and I know the chief's been talking to him direct about if people can push their questions in advance. Um, you know, my thought is, I would think there's probably a handful of questions that maybe are similar, so we can save some time, right?
Right, exactly.
So I, we'll get the, uh, we're gonna do our best to have the logistics in order.
And did you guys talk with HCTV at all about?
Not as of yet, so I've had a chance to talk to them, but if some we can uh, get the information to you.
Okay. I, you know, in my opinion, Zoom is probably not ideal for this type of meeting, but it's what we got, it's what we gotta work with at this point.
Much rather be in person, but it's just too challenging.
Yeah, yeah, we really, we don't know how it's gonna work, because.
So will it be recorded, so people can watch it later, or what?
We can, uh, I'm confident we can do a recording, and I don't really have uh, ability to repost that. That's something I'll have to dig into a little bit.
That's something that, that uh, HCTV could maybe help with if you were to.
I was more than willing to participate, but not do the technical.
Well, it's really, it's hard to do. The most successful Zoom meetings I've been on, there's somebody who's leading the meeting, and there's somebody else kind of in the background. He's just running the like tech kind of side of things.
Yeah, that's not me.
Well, I don't know if this works well. I was trying to get another machine going, and we got the feedback, so maybe I'm not the right person.
So, you know, we'll try it and do our best, and we'll go from there.
And then we'll, and then it sounds like if, so the idea would be to do them with some regularity ongoing, and so maybe next time?
Ideally, and it's not the first time we've actually done anything. We have done um, uh, open house, you know, at the uh, at the police department there. Uh, we've had um, retirement party for our sergeant that retired, you know, that the, the public was welcome. So we, you know, we, we've tried to uh, bring the public in, so, you know.
You tried to have a coffee with a cop.
We tried, we tried, yeah.
Program a few years ago.
Yeah, we tried that. We, it's not like we haven't tried to do things to bring people in. Um, we, we've, I think we've done a lot of that, um, to, to try and bring the, you know, people in to, to talk to us and get to know them. Um, the unfortunate part is, is it only becomes important when a, when a tragedy happens, and everybody wants to, you know, and it's, but um, you know, we, we work every day, and we have to um, you know, come up with things. So it'd be really important as, as we try to do different public outreach and community outreach uh, events, that people come to us, because it, the, the coffee with a cop, I think we had maybe five people uh, show up to that. Yeah, the, you know, the same with our, with, with the barbecue, I had, there was a limited amount of people that, that came to that. So we've done a lot of. Yeah, and you know, it is, so it's, we've, we've certainly tried, and we'll continue to try to, to come up with new ideas, new ideas develop. And now Zoom is somewhat of a new idea, very new to me, so, so we'll try it.
We have uh, it's there with uh, the Greensboro contact, that, you know, everybody's gonna have to identify themselves, and uh, you know, just so we can avoid the Zoom bomb, and it's somebody, you know, from the community, and you know, if we need to, we, you know, obviously have the capability to mute somebody if it's inappropriate or out of line. So, you know, we're watching all these things and figuring out a little bit as we go.
Um, so that's what I have on that. Uh, as you've probably noticed, we did, we did uh, put up the speed sign on uh, West Church Street.
I didn't notice that.
We, we put it up a little differently this year. Um, the last time we put it up, we put it up doing traffic headed uh, west. Uh, but the problem is it's picking up a lot of traffic on uh, Church Street as it came through, so we uh, we actually flipped it. Um, so it's actually taking up most of the, or collecting most of that street. I've, like, every morning I check, and it's um, uh, just past Michael Havison's place, actually, it starts picking traffic up headed, headed east. So it's taking up most of that street um, for collecting speeds. I haven't heard from anybody, whether it's made any difference or not. Um, it'd be nice to hear if something's working, rather than something that isn't working all the time, but I haven't heard.
So you haven't been able to check in with anybody?
Nobody's contacting me at all, whether it's making any difference or not, so.
Well, they, yeah, they all signed that petition, so surely they um, could be.
Yeah, it, you know, it'd be nice to hear whether it's working or not as well. The other thing is, we'll have uh, all that data, all the speed recorded, um, as we always do, you know, so we'll be able to pull that off, um, to see how many cars actually were speeding, um, you know, on that, on that road as well, so.
Is that an emailable thing, like if someone wanted to take a look at it?
Yeah, it's actually a whole report that can get printed off. Uh, way more information than you would even wanna know. Can actually, on that program, on those signs, it's, it's pretty good. Again, I'm not the one that does that, but I do have some, one of the officers is pretty good at that, um, the technical stuff, so yeah. Yeah, and we were provided like before, like aboard with tho- those reports as well, um, with different streets that, that we used it on. East Hardwick was one, and I think that's one we did once before, so, so yeah, that's.
Do you sometimes have a officer sit on that road too?
Yeah, we have, um, as well as this, that and Oak Street are probably the two most traveled highways in the village, by, by both.
Okay, no personal question?
I, I got a lot on that street, so I see pretty often the sign, and it does not look like a lot of people are speeding. So the question then is, is twenty-five miles per hour, one square, a way from a cat to hit somebody, it's just too fast for the road. The road's very narrow and often has cars, but it does look like a lot of people are going over the twenty-five.
That's generally what we find. Um, you know, we, we, for example, if you're standing watching cars drive by you sideways, you're not getting, you're not able to, to accurately judge the speed of a vehicle. Uh, that's why speed is estimation is done head on. Um, and you, we're trained to, to judge those vehicles, even without a radar. We have to be, when, when we get certified to do radar, we have to be within five miles an hour, um, guessing the speed of a vehicle for so many vehicles in order to, to obtain that. Um, so I guess we are technically a trained eye uh, on speed, and generally, we get a lot of um, people that, that may say that vehicles are speeding and going some very excessive speeds when, in fact, the data doesn't show that, that that's the case. I'm not saying that's the case here, that's just what we have seen in, in our experience. Um, people, the average layperson isn't, isn't trained to, to judge speed, and you can't judge speed unless you're, you're, you're judging it from, from straight on, so. Um, I, you know, I haven't seen a lot but of, of speed issues there uh, from the sign, but we'll know once we are able to download that data as well. And it, it does take up a very long portion of that street that it detects, so um, it would be a good representation of, of traffic.
It does, given the circumstances of the street, but the people that are going fifty, and it feels like a good safe speed, whereas the people that are going twenty-five, you get very nervous, especially if there's kids, people walking on the side of the road, it feels like the twenty-five is too fast. And I know that's a, a limit that's set, and much of the downtime designation comes into play, but I think that, that's something that I noticed.
So twenty-five mile an hour speed limit is the lowest enforceable speed in, in the state of Vermont. Anything under twenty-five, or posted under twenty-five, is basically fifty mile an hour, because it's a, it's considered a non-posted. Uh, twenty-five is the lowest enforceable, so you, you can't post a road legally less than twenty-five miles per hour. That's the lowest enforceable speed in Vermont.
Eric, what's the rationale for that?
Been that way for twenty-plus years that I've known, since I've been in it, so I, I don't know. I don't know. But when you get down to that slow of a speed on a highway, so you say you get down to fifteen miles per hour on a regularly traveled highway.
This is, we're talking about urban contact streets, we're not talking about highway.
True, but it's, it's still a well-traveled highway. Um, and generally, speed limits are set, and the reason we went to the twenty-five in a lot of these, in, in the village, was because when the traffic study was done, it, it's believed that the majority. I hear myself echoing. I, I believe that the uh, uh, it, it's believed that the majority of people will drive at a safe speed. So you look at, we do a speed study, which was done by an engineer back when John was here. Um, we had the speed study done in the village. And uh, the speed study showed that the majority of the drivers, without the posted speed limit, doing twenty-five, were driving around the twenty-five mile per hour. Um, so, so that's believed to be a safe speed at that point. People, most people will generally drive at a safe speed, they don't drive recklessly. And they use that as an indicator as to what a safe speed would be on that, on that, whatever particular highway.
Why am I just random, Charles?
I'm waiting.
I will take up the meeting time to pursue those various threats, but uh, it seems to me that if you assume that people drive well, then testing what does, what did most people traveled down that road would give you the basis for saying this is what the speed limit should be. But it doesn't have to make sense, does it?
I just have to make sure it's enforced. That's my job. It's not my job to set the speed limit, so.
I mean, we did have people here last time presenting a, a petition asking for stronger enforcement there, so.
Yeah, and again, you have the data from the last time we did a speed study there, which showed little to none.
Right.
Excessive speed on, on the street.
I mean, I know, it seems like it wasn't that long ago, but it may have been.
Two or three years ago, I believe, uh, maybe two years ago.
I don't.
And the, the sign was pointed in a different direction, so I instructed for the sign to be pointed for a different travel direction, and we can take that data as well.
Yeah.
And see what, what we have.
If we made it, you could just check in with Scott, because he represented that group of people, and I think it would go a long way to just talk to him about it.
Or, again, Ross was here too.
Right.
Yeah. Peo-, you know, people's impression of speed is, is sometimes different than what, yeah, the factual speed is, so. So we, you know, we have something that will record that particular speed, and, and you go with the data, you know, to, to reflect that.
And that's right, and I feel we definitely have places in town that twenty-five is probably too fast, like right on our main street, you know, but it's not, we, we can't set a lower speed limit, so.
That's where our conversation ended about. The wonderful presentation we got last time about pedestrian safety might come in.
Yeah, definitely.
Like what else can we do besides setting speed limits to make sure?
Exactly, to, to improve safety, yep. That's when we're building overpasses and, yeah, it'll be good.
Uh, alright, so the next thing I have is um, uh, some of us will be going to a training at the end of the month to, it's a training for us to observe. As uh, uh, Vermont State Police are going to every, every uh, trooper on the road will be outfitted with another option of less lethal, uh, which is a beanbag rounds, uh, which is a uh, shotgun shell that's loaded with a beanbag, very small beanbag. Um, they, their tactical team has used it for years, uh, and it's been, uh, some different places use it. And so they're giving every road, road officer now, um, they're going to train them and equip uh, them with uh, beanbag rounds, which is another less lethal option. And so some of us are gonna go, they invited everybody, uh, in case uh, we were ever interested, and in case they came to help us, so we know what to expect and, and so on, and, and how they're gonna deploy them, et cetera. So we're, some of us are gonna go to that tram, planning on going to, one of the trains at the end of the month, uh, for that. Um, there has been an ammo shortage, uh, which had me very worried, uh, but that's been uh, all of this year, uh, since the COVID. Created a lot of panic uh, with people, and was creating a huge shortage of ammunition. So it had me nervous, uh, because obviously we have to qualify every year, and it's a very, fairly extensive qualification course, uh, that everybody has to go through. But I was able to, our regular supplier assured me they had everything, and um, they actually keep it out, because they do supply police departments, that's what they do for, for ammunition. Uh, I was able to get everything, um, so that our, we won't have any delay in our annual training that we're required to do for that, so.
So you get toilet paper through that same supplier?
I did not ask him about that, but uh, the other interesting target, the other, one of the other interesting things we found the other day was we tried to order rubber gloves.
Yeah.
Uh, we were low, and obviously we use rubber gloves a lot, um, and we searched multiple suppliers. Uh, everybody was back ordered for anywhere from a month to two months on rubber gloves. We were able to get some in, so we now have some, but uh, it wasn't easy. There was a lot of research done to try and find somebody who actually had some that we could get, um, so.
And we're early on in the process. We had some extra resent the wastewater facility, and we ended up sharing some with the permit, just to ensure they have their personal protective equipment, so.
Masks haven't been as much of an issue. I think that's kind of some supply maybe has caught up, um, but all of a sudden rubber gloves, an hour, very short supply, so.
Sorry, I got two cases down the firehouse.
Yeah? So yeah, so we, you know, we got some, yes, but, but yeah, I was a little worried, cause we were running, well, very low levels, but, um, any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah.
We actually don't have a Hardwick Electric Department report on our agenda tonight, but we do have Nat Smith here. Are you here to represent the Hardwick Electric Department?
Hi, thanks, yeah, I'm Nat Smith. Um, I can't represent the Hardwick Electric Department, I'm just a commissioner, so I'm speaking individually.
Okay.
I speak in.
In support of Lynn Gedankin's application for the open seat as a commissioner, I can't imagine that there's anybody more qualified. Uh, you all know that she was chairman for at least the last, well, all the years that I've been a commissioner, five, six, eight years, I don't know. Uh, I can't imagine anybody more qualified or even closely as qualified as, as Lynn, uh, to be appointed to that open seat. I think you have a letter in support of her application from Mike Sullivan as well, and probably some of you have heard from some other commissioners as well. Be glad to answer any questions, and I know that Lynn would be available by Zoom or telephone.
Thank you.
Yep.
Who's the chair at this point?
I, I can't hear?
Who's the chair at this point?
Uh, we decided that there is no chair. I'm the convenor, was my word. We would like to have her as the chair.
Thank you for coming, Sharon.
Your pleasure.
Excuse me.
We, we.
Nat, do your bylaws allow that?
There are no bylaws, believe it or not.
There are, there are no set rules that you work by?
No, in fact, at our meeting last week, we did have a legal attorney there talking about such things, because one of the new commissioners asked about that, and he said, no, for municipal utilities like this, you just have to obey state law. Um, and it's remarkably few guidelines or bylaws. He wasn't aware that any utility in Vermont, electric utility, had any bylaws. So I, I'm not sure.
Are all electric utilities in Vermont municipal, but it, utility, utilities, or are there, are there commercial utilities?
Are there what? Are there what?
Municipal versus commercial?
No, not, I'm not there by commercial.
Are all utilities in Vermont municipally based?
No.
No, I think there are some private ones.
There are some private ones, do they, do they have their own set of?
Don't know.
That's stunning to me.
What?
Well.
I'm not sure what you're looking for, actually, literally.
Well, a set of, of, this is the way we, this is the way we organize, this is the way we run our meetings, this is how we structure ourselves, just basic bylaws.
Well, you select five, as you know, with various, you know, requirements, and then we have to obey the meeting law and whatever other state statutes pertain. I'm pretty sure I made on that, but that shouldn't be the last word, but just the other night I did hear talk about this from a lawyer.
A huge oversight, because most, most, most town committees have at least a mission statement and some sort of organizing principles. Yes, no?
I would just go to, I think that's a maybe a good, a whole other conversation to have. But I was just wondering if it makes sense to have, not to jump from that ways, but Lynn did say that she would be available for a phone call if need be. I'm just wondering if that's something that the board needs, or is wanting to hear from her directly during this time.
So we're, I would say that, yeah, we could. So we are jumping around a little, I had mistakenly thought that Nat might be here to give an HED report, so I kind of slotted that in. We haven't hit item one yet, which is the approval of the police department officer. So I, so you're absolutely right, Lynn did say she would be available by phone if, if we could, if I could text her when it was time. I can do that, if that's helpful. She's in another meeting separately, would leave that meeting to dial in here, along with attendant technical difficulties, but we could certainly do that.
She's not available until seven, is what she indicated.
Well, it's coming right up. It'll be seven by the time we get there.
Give her a heads up.
I'm not sure Elizabeth, what we're looking for in bylaws, uh, may I know? Would it have any pertinence to the selection of somebody for the open seat?
No.
You'd probably think of something else.
You know, every organization I've been involved with, you have turnover in the officers, the commissioners, and then the next meeting, first thing you do is to elect a chair.
An organizational meeting?
The organizational meeting, right.
Well, we decided not to.
You didn't elect a chair.
No, we did. I'm the senior member, and I said, okay, I will convene the meeting, do we, do we want to have a chair, or an acting chair? Roger Prevo said he didn't want to do it, I said I didn't want to be, and the two new guys said they didn't want to be. I said, okay, I will convene, and I don't think there's anything illegal about that.
I'm not really thinking illegal, I'm thinking irregular procedure.
Well, so I'm gonna request that we, we move on to the police appointment, and then we can come back to this. I'm gonna ask the select board now, though, so I could give Lynn a little bit of a heads up, do we want her to join by phone? Because I can text her now.
I hate to pull her out of another meeting for this.
I also hate to have the, the technical connection is just not good.
So I imagine you can wait till the future meeting.
Okay. And I'm anticipating.
Just discuss how it is.
We're gonna wanna have a meeting with the select board and the board of commissioners, just to go over some things, and this could be one of them. All right, so I'm gonna, I'll text her and tell her that we're not gonna request that she dial in, and she should stay where she is. Good?
It's fine.
So let's move on to item number one, which is.
I can text her.
You got it? Okay, the police department, sorry, as Aaron has already said, was down an officer, and it's found that somebody is actually full-time certified, which is a rare, a rare thing.
It's tough to find that way.
So you already told us some, are you gonna share a name?
I can, sure, Donald Jenness is the officer. He is currently, up until he starts working here, at the Lamont County Sheriff's Department as a, he's at the Lamont County Sheriff's Department as a transport deputy, he's the head, the state transport deputy for that department. He was looking to expand his, do a little more than just transport work, you know, as a police officer. His goal, and when he started, was to be a police officer, and that's always looking to do. And so the structure of our police department, as a municipal police department, fits into more of what he is looking for in his career. And so, so he, he applied.
So you mentioned that he had multiple degrees, are they all in, what are the degrees for?
Physical therapy and physical, I can't remember, it was physical therapy and not even in law enforcement.
Well, yeah, but, you know.
Physical education.
Social work, if you kind of get, in my mind.
Physical education and physical therapy. Yeah, so if anybody gets hurt, you might be able to help. So, yeah, we've, uh, some of our officers, you know, he's been working here, so some of the officers had worked with him anyways, and, you know, knew him through working with him through different departments, et cetera, so.
And how far away does he live?
I never will disclose exactly where, but.
But he has a commute?
Yeah, he's within of our service area, he's within probably fifteen minutes or so, fifteen within our service area, so, yeah. So I consider that's pretty local.
Yeah, that's good.
Excellent. More questions? Does somebody wanna make a motion that we appoint Donald Jenness to the police department as an officer?
So.
I'll second.
All right.
How do you spell his last name?
J E N N E S S.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, in the past, maybe I'm, maybe I'm just overcomplicating things, didn't we have a document that we had to read out for appointing an officer? In the past, or is this just a different?
Yes, I can, I can read it if you like.
Okay, it just wasn't in the packet, so I wasn't sure if it's, okay.
So, police officer appointment, know all persons by these presents. These presents, that we, the undersigned select persons and town manager of the town of Hardwick, Vermont hereby appoint Donald Jenness, police officer for said town, under Title 24, Section 1931 VSA, with all the powers granted under this section and Title 24, Section 1935 VSA. Starting August nineteenth, twenty twenty, which was yesterday, right? Until further notice.
Long, long date on it, that's good.
That's, that's the. Yeah, all right.
Just want to be official.
Often in the past, we've also had, we've had people come in too, but I know it doesn't always work out. But maybe if it's possible some other time to.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of times they're working for another agency still before they're there, so it's hard to get them to come in.
But if there's an opportunity so that we can meet them, that'd be great, yeah. So, all right, so I think we had a motion, stand a second, so any more discussion? All in favor of appointing Donald Jenness to the police department, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? Motion carries.
How's Lucian doing?
Did Lucian say aye?
I don't know if Lucian's there, Lucian, are you saying anything?
Aye.
Aye, excellent. Yeah, I can hear you, beautiful, well done. All right, I'm signing. It's coming to you. All right, all right, next, so thank you, and thanks, Aaron, for, for doing that, bringing, getting, recruiting qualified people. Next up is select board to discuss appointment of HED commissioner, one seat for a Hardwick resident, given the recent resignation. And we have, we do, as we already, Nat's not here, as we've already.
No, he's left.
Okay, very segwayed into this before, we have Lynn Gedanken, who's previously served on the HED board, has expressed interest again, which is, we're grateful for. So we have, we have an executive session to, at the end of our meeting, to discuss that assignment.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a second to recognize Dave Mitchell for, he's the commissioner who resigned.
Yeah.
Has been on the board, it sounds like for.
Number of years.
Number of years, so it's, we're sorry to see him go.
Yeah, thanks to Dave, for sure.
So Lynn did text back, I did get a hold of Lynn to say we're all set, Nat spoke on your behalf, and she replied, thanks, so she did reply, thank you.
So just to note, we had no other letters of interest this time around.
Right. But we'd also like to, at a future meeting, potentially, just talk with them about the organization, how the thing works.
Yeah.
Because clearly there's some misunderstanding about how things, or that I'm not understanding, that Wiz doesn't know. I mean, if we don't know what, how it works, and they don't seem to, yeah.
So I really.
It'd be nice to have a little talk.
I totally agree, and I think it's been a while since we brought the two, we brought the select board together with the HED board. I don't even remember exactly when that was, other than we did it up here, but it's definitely time to do it again.
But, yeah, trying to figure out how their open meeting thing actually works, when they don't seem to have meetings that the public could attend, or, or, and they don't, they don't broadcast them, so how does anybody really know what's happened, how, how it works, and what that is?
So, yes, I think we have, we have some questions, and we'd like to have a discussion, I agree.
I was also planning, I wasn't able to go to their meeting last Monday, but I'm planning on attending the next HED, as a new select board member, just to understand their meetings, so. And I had a great talk with Roger Prevo about that, and he was welcoming any select board members to join them.
Yeah. Yeah, I haven't been in a while. So I'll just say that if anyone felt moved to offer an appointment now, and not have, go through, or we can, we can definitely wait till after the executive session.
I'd rather wait for the executive session.
All right, fair enough. All right, so next up is item number three, is board to take action on approving updated town sign policy. So the sign policy, we have a lot of policy type things that we're.
And there seem to be two sign policies in this packet, is that one the old and one the new?
Lucian offered two revisions, I think, and then I had offered just the changes that we talked about at the last meeting. I don't know, there's, there are slight differences. It seems that on one of Lucian's, or maybe both, he removes the whole five-day thing, and, yeah, I think, maybe. And then he has a reference to defining what temporary signs and banners are.
So one of these. One of these drafts definitely still has the five-day reference, the first one that's in here.
And then I don't see.
Maybe should we ask Lucian while we have him to describe his version while we look?
Lucian, can you?
Do you wanna speak to this?
Yeah, do you wanna offer any guidance on the revised sign policies that we're looking at?
Yeah, sure, I'm having a hard time hearing, so I'm not sure everything is said, but I think you're asking me to talk about the sign policies that I emailed out.
Right.
Okay, so basically, I, we talked about first amendment stuff last time, and I guess, I know it's a long way around, and I apologize to everybody, Cherry, for putting in some work, but, and I kind of feel like we just may stick to what we have with sign policy and stuff, and I think that it's good, I think. Can you hear me still?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, but I think that it's good that, I think that it's good that they're, they were updating the other policies to be included with it. So I offered basically a change of policy that incorporates, you know, the sign policy, the banner policy, and the, there's a no time with the blinking light policy, of one, but reversed back to the same. Big thing to what zoning laws, what sets the zoning regulations for our overall sign policy on town property. So that would be what I would favor, but if it looks like the, that you all would rather go with the new sign policy, then there's just a couple of changes in there, that I'd like to go with, if that's the case. Does that make sense?
Sure. Yeah.
Yeah, I think people are saying that, yes, it does make sense, and I think, in our physical packets that we have, Lucian, it looks like, which you probably don't have, because you're not here, but the, the, so the first one in our packet looks to be the new, the new sign policy as recently drafted with some, with some changes, I think. And, and then the second one in our packet looks to be, I think, what you were talking about when you said that you're kind of leaving the old policy in place, but just dealing with some other things, so. This is the one, because under signs, it just has a reference per the Hardwick Unified Development bylaws. Then there's a quote there. And, right. So I think you're, so basically you're offering us two choices to consider.
Right, right, and I, you know, I'm arguing not passionately, but, but that I think that the one that kind of reversed tax to what we started with, circles back around, is the one that I would favor, but I just wanted to dissolve the draft, in case that that was not, not what people were thinking.
Yeah.
And so it's still, it replaces those previous policy, the, the previous, like, non-permitted sign locations and art on public property, those two go away with this new, because this incorporates public art and banners and other. It just does not include that business about having them be in the peace park only and all that stuff, which is fine. So I'll make a motion that we go with this. which is fine. Um, so, I'll make a motion that we go with this version, the most recent Lucian version, that, um, doesn't actually give any guidance as far as where people would put their posters or banners, but how they can, um, you know, uh, it does speak to the town property part of it, and that's all we really need to do. It doesn't limit where people put the signs in the, you know, like, the posters that we have that are a new thing, that prompted this whole thing. We haven't, we're not giving any guidance on that. We're just gonna not do that.
So-
But we can go with this one.
So, so, just a sec. So, Sheri's made a motion that we accept, and when she's saying this one, she means the second one in our packet, correct?
Yeah.
And it's the, the, it, um-
It has the second, um, purpose of, of, the purpose of this policy is to establish the use of town-owned property by private citizens for posting of signs, banners, artistic installations related local, state, national, and/or global events or issues. The town of Hardwick, through its Select Board, reserves the right to allow, restrict, and/or forbid the use of town-owned property for such purposes. And then it defines what those signs, public art, banners, and, yeah, that, and what those are. Yeah.
This, this is the version that has reference to the bylaw, development bylaw?
Correct. The second paragraph is the reference to the bylaws.
Yeah. Okay, so Sheri, Sheri's made a motion for that one. Kaylee has a question, I think.
I do, but I can hold my question.
If we want to have a, just do-
It's a very simple question.
Fire away. We don't have, we don't have a second yet, but go ahead.
It's a question for Sean, because the reason why we brought this back up, and the reason why we revisited these policies, is because Sean came to us wondering what to do about the posters that were at the peace park. And so, my question is, does, if this is on, if this policy is on the table, would this answer your question? Would this policy be enough for the, for, to do what Sheri's asking, to, to make the decision to-
To give you some reference or guidance.
Or would we have to do this again, or would we have to do this again if, if there was another display of artwork at the peace park that was not pre-approved?
I think there may be an instance in the future where you, you can't necessarily get the clear guidance from the policy, but I think that's what we're into with this discussion anyways, right? You know, there's gonna be, what, it, it's back to the First Amendment issue to some degree. What somebody finds offensive, maybe another person doesn't, so, uh, it's, it's not-
Not particularly on the dispatches.
No, it's okay. It's not a yes or a no in some instances, I guess. This is how I need to respond right now. Um, I don't know that it necessarily makes for a perfect flow line decision, if I can say it that way. I don't know how to improve it, to be fair to the question. You know, I don't know that there's necessarily anything more that, that could be done to make for a better procedure.
So, thank you, Sean.
Has anybody asked the state about it? Even though it is, this town of Hardwick, it is still Route fourteen, fifteen.
Yep.
You know?
Some of those places are.
We, we have the right to maintain the roads-
Yes.
And dig up anytime we want, in exchange, y-you know, for allowing us to do that, but I know there was an instance where we actually put up a sign downtown, and the state basically said, "Take it down," because you didn't have a permit to put those up.
Yeah.
So, I don't know.
So, these are, yeah, I think they're a little different, because they're temporary signs that we're discussing, and specifically, the policy deals with, uh, the temp, these signs on, um, town property. So, you're right. I mean, some of, some of it is right up next to Route fifteen, or fourteen, or sixteen, but, um, but the policy's meant to be addressing, um, uh, the town-owned parcels and what-
Instead of the roadway, like, the state purview part.
But you're right, there is some interplay there, where the town, the state probably has right of way, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
I haven't seen the policy, but I have some concerns-
Yeah.
Thinking that it could have led to where we would be involved at some point.
Yeah.
Uh, so, I, does it define what signs are-
Yeah.
And what signs aren't?
Yes. You want me to read it?
Yeah.
Uh, it, so it doesn't actually define, there's-
Not defined.
So, my, my concern-
Yeah.
Is, if it doesn't define it, and I'm sure you've gone over all this, and-
We've been around a few times.
If it doesn't define it-
Yeah.
Um, and doesn't keep it to, say, lo, advertising for local events, community-based events, things like that, um, then Sean decides, if, and I'm just, I have read it as I said, so I'm, I'm thinking, so then if, if Sean is put, is left in the seat of making the decision, that he feels that something would be offensive, or was offensive, he takes it down, and then he takes a lot of heat, because another group feels that that wasn't offensive, and he shouldn't have taken it down. So, that's where I, I see-
That's where, that's why we're here.
Yeah, exactly. And that's, so if, if we know the reason we're here, and if that hasn't been addressed, does this policy really address anything? And, and like I said, I haven't read it, I haven't seen it, so I don't know. I'm just asking.
An earlier version, Erin, had language that used, that essentially prohibited hate speech. But Lucian was concerned that that flew in the face of the First Amendment, which is why he took it out.
So, the, the, since we haven't passed a new policy yet, we've only discussed it, the old and existing policy says that signs are prohibited on town property unless you get permission from the Select Board. Um, and then this says-
I agree with this attachment here.
Hmm?
I agree with that one as attachment.
So, and then what Lucian is proposing in this new one, essentially, doesn't really change that. Um, it says, uh, per the bylaws, temporary signs and banners advertising public or community events to be displayed in designated locations on town property with the prior permission of the Select Board, which shall be removed immediately following the event, um, are exempt from zoning. So, and then specifically, it says, "Don't put anything at the intersection with a blinking light." Um, yeah. So, it doesn't really try, it doesn't make an attempt to define what's allowed, it just says nothing's allowed unless you come, ask for permission. So, that's what we've had. Um, I think that leaves us the most leeway.
I agree, yeah.
What it does, it does not attempt to define, it doesn't attempt to address, like, what do you do about something that pops up? Yeah, it just doesn't.
Yeah, can I make a proposal?
Yeah.
That, and that, because we've, it's a complicated issue.
Yeah.
And, um, and Sheri, in particular, has done a really awesome job trying, trying to bring together two pretty different policies, and Lucian, thank you for trying to bring us home to the, to the policy, too. Um, my, uh, my question is, because the, the proposal on the table is to accept the policy, um, the second policy that was written, which would bring together the policy from 2011 and the policy from 2006. In my personal opinion, the, um, policy, as it reads, does not fully capture the art and public property policy. It more captures the, um, permitted sign policy. So, I'm wondering if we added to the public art section of the policy that's on the table, the paragraph that specifies the peace park, and reframe the first sentence to say, "Any public art is allowed only in the public park known as the peace park located northeast of the Harcourt Gazette Building." It specifies an amount of time. I think if we specify it as public art, then it's also not signage. It's giving it a place, um, and it's also recognizing the name of that park as a, as a way of incorporating, um, the public art aspect of the original 2006 art policy.
Sounds like she and Lucian should get together.
I agree.
Yep. You don't have a second.
Wiz is saying, "You and Lucian should get together and get a new one for us next time."
Oh, good God. I think we can do it. I think it can be, you know, I, I, I'm inclined to call a question, and let's just vote on the thing, and include the part about the peace park in, in the new one. Lucian, are you okay with that? No, Lucian.
Dealer? Dealer? Anyone?
It's just, it's, um, it's, yeah, it, it's not necessary to continue to draw this out. It's, it's simple.
Yeah, I got bumped off for a while there.
Okay, so, um, I, were you, were you, uh, present there for this last couple of three minutes? Because it was pretty significant conversation.
Yeah, I, I think I, I got bumped off in the middle, I think.
Okay, so- Just real quick, what was-
Did you hear what Kaylee said?
What was, uh, Kaylee has suggested some edits that would incorporate some information about the peace park. What that led to was somebody saying, "Well, maybe we need to have a redraft," and then Sheri, uh, if I'm not mistaken, has called the question, but you maybe want to repeat what you had said, Sheri. I don't think we have a second, though.
We don't have a second, so we can't technically call the, call the question.
Oh, okay, then, I-
Maybe you want to repeat what you thought would be a good strategy for Lucian?
Can I make a minute? So, we, basically, I make the motion that we adopt the second version of the Town of Hardwick Select Board policy regarding posting signage, banners, and public art displays on town property, edited by Lucian Avery. Thank you, Lucian, with, um, the addition of, under the public art section, second paragraph, the addition of the third paragraph-
Sorry, I gotta interrupt you. Mr. Chair, this is your responsibility, but as a point of order, there's a motion on the table. We can't offer a change.
I withdraw the motion.
You withdrew?
I withdraw the motion.
He did it right now.
I missed her.
Okay.
He did it right now, you're right.
So, to-
Am I, sorry.
Oh, you're good.
I just want to make sure you're in order, so there's not a question here.
No, 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 that's cool, that's cool. So, to, you with us, Lucian?
Um, I think I am.
Okay. So, to include the third paragraph on the first draft, which reads, uh, with this edit, "Any public art is allowed only in the public park known as, quote, peace park located northeast of the Harcourt Gazette Building at forty-two South Main Street, or securely fastened to the pedestrian bridge located between Main Street and the Daniel Building parking lot. Postings may remain in place for a period of up to five days, and all such postings during the entire period of the sign is in place. If the postings are damaged in disrepair or illegible due to weather or other means, can be immediately removed at the discretion of the town or its agents." And that would be, just to repeat, under the public art section of the sign policy.
Do you think that, that only public art shouldn't be in other places in town? Is that, is that why that would be done?
So, it's, it's basically designating the peace park as the only place for public art. Anything else would have to be approved by the town and the Select Board, or the organizations and the Select Board.
Oh, okay, so you're giving blanket permission for any public artists to show up there for five days? Is that what you're saying, in the peace park alone?
Correct.
So...
We still have the issue of what's offensive and what isn't.
Right, the buying public art.
So, yeah.
And so-
Right, so?
No, I'm just saying, we just-
So, an installation can be there for five days.
I mean, in some ways, that's, that's even more complicated than having some sort of public, now, Sean, that, that type of art is not art.
No, he doesn't. It just has to stay there for five days, and then needs to be removed.
Oh, okay, any, any art whatsoever can be there for five days.
Yeah.
So, um-
Much like the posters that are there right now.
Five, five days can go on a civil arrest. Kind of small, again, to make that point.
Um, so, Kaylee's made a motion. That's where we're at. Hi.
I think it's up to Lucian to second it, because this is, you know, this is as a sign of approval.
So, I'm as a sign, a sign of approval?
Lucian, will you second Kaylee's motion?
Well, I, I guess I, as a listener, for the purpose, sure.
Okay, so you've got a second.
So, we have a motion and a second. Um, personally, I feel like I'd rather see it all written out, and, and do it next time. I know some people are, some people are tired of this, um, going round and round, but, because I, I also would like to, uh, reword a little bit of the, I kind of liked the, if we're going to stay with more or less the same, uh, uh, policy on signs that we had before, I believe we had something that would, some language about, uh, that other signs not approved will be removed at the will or the discretion of the Select Board, and I kind of liked that language.
Discretion of the town.
Or the town, yeah, which it just says, "We can take anything down we want. Our land."
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So, we did have, we did have the-
Okay, so maybe it sounds like, maybe somebody should, um, grab the bus, uh, we could discuss it again next time, isn't it, sir?
So, some people, yes, I think we're divided on that.
Yeah. So, that's, I would just add, I think we did, did do our due diligence in the first version, because we had it vetted by our zoning administrator, we had it vetted by-
Our lawyer.
Our lawyer, we had it vetted by the town itself. So, um, we can go through that process again, for the edits that have been suggested, but I, we did go, we did make sure that it was, that it fit with, um, with the laws.
With the zoning and the, and legal review, yes.
So, maybe we do the same process, I don't know, Sean, if that makes sense, for the final version, or if that's overkill?
Select Board's prerogative.
Yeah.
I think it's overkill. Just rewrite the thing, and let's, yeah, just rewrite it with that addition.
I guess-
Unless Lucian wants to write it some more.
I can't ju, I can't tell if someone's talking about it.
No, uh, go ahead, Lucian.
Okay, sorry, I thought broken up. So, I guess, the thing that I'm, I'm saying is that, uh, if, with this version, Sean would have to decide what's art, because if signs need approval, but art doesn't need approval for five days, then, like, all of the signs that are down there now are, are signs that we have, um, drawing them. So, is that, I 'm not sure if that's a sign or that's art?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Agreed.
And are they a problem?
So, um, just to summarize, just to summarize where we're at, we have a motion and a second. Kaylee made a motion to, um, to adopt the second, uh, policy in our, in our handbook here, and with, um, a significant addition, adding a second paragraph under public art. So, we have a motion and a second.
Designating the peace park as a place for-
For public art.
So, adding the peace park as a place-
Right.
For public displays of art.
Yep, so-
I'm happy to help wordsmith that one paragraph in particular.
Okay.
If there are other places that we need to, if, is that the only thing that we're getting stuck on? Because I'm happy to reword, reword that, um, to include maybe some more of the policy language that's in the art and public property policy from 2006, and then bring it back to the Select Board, if that's really the biggest, if the public art is what we need to reword.
That's probably it.
Does that sound good to you, Lucian?
Um, I, I guess I can answer that, sorry.
I am volunteering to help wordsmith just the public art paragraph under the policy that you have edited.
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah, that's, 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 that is, sounds good.
So, you're, you're volunteering to do that for next time?
I'm also retracting my motion.
You can, I don't think you can after a second, but we can vote, uh, we can, you can vote against your motion.
Can we, can we vote to, uh, with the, that amendment, like, you know? Can we, can we vote to, uh, with that amendment, like, you know? So she's gonna bring it back next time and we voted to accept it as amended, sort of, no?
Uh, I don't think so because we, well, I wouldn't vote for that because we wouldn't have seen it.
Right.
So. Are you guys ready to vote on?
We'll keep the discussion rolling.
Yes, exactly. We're gonna try to ride this thing into budget, budget season. Okay, so. All right, so here's the deal. We have a motion. If you want to just get this over with and adopt it as Kaylee's motion suggested, we can vote yea. If we vote nay, if we vote it down, then Kaylee's offered to wordsmith it, at least the Public Art Section, and bring it back to us next time. And at that point, we should all be in a place to be supportive. So all in favor of approving the, the, um, the sign policy, please say aye. Any, all opposed, say nay.
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 Get Lucian's vote, please.
Lucian, are you voting? That was a nay? Okay, so the motion fails. Thank you, everyone. Uh, next up is the Hardwick Equity Committee Formation. So we, I think Lucian, I think Lucian.
Yep.
Put together a, um, a draft Equity Committee Policy, which is gonna give us a formation of the Equity Committee. So thank you, Lucian, for putting this together.
So I'm happy to, one of the questions on the agenda is also, not sure who is the lead. So Lucian volunteered to do a lot of work to pull together the documents for the committee formation, which is really amazing. I had also volunteered to help spearhead the Equity Committee. And then, so there is not necessarily a specific Select Board lead on the Equity Committee as it stands right now. We've kind of, I've taken on some, um, different questions and Lucian has volunteered, again, to help with the language around the formation of the committee, which is what he's submitted to us here.
Yeah.
So we, um, there is that, the document that Lucian can speak to. And in terms of kind of the process of that document, I think there's still a lot of questions that were mentioned at the last, that Lucian mentioned at the last meeting. Obviously, Lucian, you should speak for yourself there, but we're kind of waiting to get guidance and feedback from other organizations, from some community members who were here with us at a previous meeting to really make sure that we're moving forward in the most intentional way that we can. So, um, Lucian, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Um, yeah, I guess in some ways, I would be going so much to move the head on this. It feels like, in some ways, navigating, um, reaching out to people might be the job of our faculty committee. So in some ways, I'm leaning towards, um, towards forming the committee and having the committee do that work. And if, and I think if they decide when they get a little hesitant, oh, things be changed, then it's fairly easy to change, and there's a chance, you know, maybe to focus or whatever. So I guess that's where I was leaning towards, in fact, actually, for when I started thinking about adopting this and getting this in role.
So just to make sure I'm understanding you, Lucian, you're thinking that we should adopt the formation documents as a first step?
Well, yeah, I'm thinking that, um, you know, I'm not sure after a policy, do we need a public hearing? Or something, but what is, you know, does anybody know the process to that? I'm not sure.
For the formation of a committee?
What about it? I didn't hear that.
For a policy or say that, ask the question again, Lucian?
Yeah, so for the form of this committee, I believe this is, we formed the committee for making a policy. I think, that's how, I think that's how the Recreation Committee looks like it was formed. And that's what I based this on. So in order to do that, we need to have, I know the ordinance is we have to have a public hearing before we adopt an ordinance or two, maybe two hearings, I can't remember.
We don't have to have a public hearing to create a committee, do we? That's what he's asking.
I'm not aware that we do.
No, we don't have to, never done it in the past.
Well, there are a lot of things.
The commentary, Sheri's asked Eric about if you have to do the public hearings for committee development. The answer is no.
Well, we don't think.
Okay.
Not necessarily, so just to just, my understanding on an ordinance change, yes, you would have to go through a hearing process on ordinance change. We're not talking about an ordinance.
Right.
We're talking about formation of a committee.
We did not have a public hearing around creating the downtown commission that exists but doesn't function. So I think that, you know, this is all good work and there are people in the community who are waiting for us to say that we would like them to tell us if they want to be part of this committee. So if we have the formation document, which Lucian has largely created here, if we can agree on this, then people can contact the town manager's office and tell us if they want to be part of this committee. Yeah, I, yeah, right?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
It's just like what happened with the Conservation Commission last year.
Yeah.
Same process.
Except that was.
Right.
I thought we did that, I thought we did that at town meeting.
We, we, the town okayed it at town meeting.
Yeah.
The budget.
No, it was. It was, it was a formation committee.
Right?
Was.
Yeah, but that, that's a little different because the Conservation Commission is something that's.
It's a state.
There's a state statute talking about conservation commissions and how you establish them.
Yeah. To my knowledge, there isn't a state statute on Equity Committees as of yet.
So my question is, because Lucian has presented us with an option for the Equity Committee.
Yeah.
Um, what is the most effective way for the Select Board to weigh in on edits? Or, um, like, do we want to review it right now? And we do have it as an action item on the agenda? Or do we want to just kind of talk about it and then review again and?
Well, I think the intent on the agenda was just to get an update on, from you and from Lucian. And, and we have, and this is one thing that we have, is a draft.
Yeah, I asked for the action item because we used to do that on our agendas and.
Yeah.
And I know that there are people waiting for us to take action. We made the resolution in June.
Yeah.
And it's taken us this long to get to this place where we're trying to just let people inquire about being on the committee. So while we can create, you know, we can go ahead and say that we're good with most of this or we can discuss this and do what we need to do with it. The committee, once it's formed, can make it its own, you know, it can come to us with, with changes to this plan. It has to come to us with the budget, et cetera, right?
Mm-hmm.
So it shouldn't be this hard to just be able to keep moving forward. I mean, I don't know why we're just dragging our, you know, it shouldn't, it shouldn't take this long to do a thing that we, you know?
Yeah.
It's just frustrating for me, obviously. The only, I, I think this is all great work by Lucian. The only thing that I questioned him about and then I questioned, continue to question is why we would pay people a stipend for being on a committee. Do we pay the Recreation Committee people? I know that we pay zoning and planning because they're quasi judicial or whatever.
And Hardwick Electric gets paid, I believe.
Yeah, but that's a different, as we know, they're a different thing.
Okay.
And they don't have bylaws or anything. But, uh, you know, I mean, I don't know, no other committees get paid. I, I just think, I find it odd that we would pay, when we, when we're forming this thing and we've, and we've previously discussed how we don't have any money to give them to potentially pay speakers or organizers or facilitators. I do think that there is, um, the money to be found to pay for those things, but they, the committee could come to us and ask and tell us what they've, you know, what they'd like to line up and what it's gonna cost. And we could do.
And that's addressed in Article Eight.
A variation of, you know, there could be town businesses, for instance, who would like to contribute, make donations to this committee for its work. So, but I don't necessarily see that they need to be paid $25 per meeting.
And I agree with Sheri. If we have a committee of five members, meeting every month, this 12 meetings, at $25 a head is $1,500. That's $1,500 that would have to be built into the budget when no other committee gets paid in a similar fashion. And I could, I see all kinds of problems with that.
Yeah, but that's the only thing I.
Yeah, I, I agree with that edit. I also would just maybe specify based on, based on, um, the section five, where we say a majority of the committee shall be Hardwick residents. I don't know if that's specific enough, Lucian, I don't know if you want to speak to that, section five. I know part of the research that you had done was that the committee could include members of other towns and how that might be a really strong part of this committee. But I don't know if, in your research, if you found if there's a ratio that we should have there.
Oh, okay, I think you addressed that to me.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I talked to the, I talked to the Vermont League of Cities of Town and they, when I talked with one of their lawyers, they said that because it's not a statutory committee, we can't have people from out of town. And I think, did I say in there that it would have to be? I think I said that it would have to be a majority Hardwick. And I'm not sure if you were, if you were referring to that.
Yeah, I, I was referring to that. I was just wondering if we should have specifications on what that means. Is that half, is that a, because right now, there could be as few as three members and as many as nine. So I'm just wondering if we should specify a percentage of the committee or if that's not needed.
Well, the majority is more than 50%.
Is, is, yeah. It's more than 50, okay.
Yeah, majority is more than 50%. So if it's three, yeah. So it always has to be.
Fifty-one percent.
Does it work? Does that make sense?
Sure, yeah, I just wasn't sure if there's.
Sort of like establishing quorum, it always has to be, um, yeah. I can't say it. I don't know how to say it.
Some, some committees or boards have written in then what, what will constitute a quorum. Oh, wait, a majority of the members shall constitute a quorum. There we go. So, um, uh. It's somewhat curious to me that, that, I guess it's fine, but that, I'm just thinking about having people from outside of town on the, on the Hardwick Equity Committee, but. I don't know, maybe it's.
Yeah, I guess the idea for that was just that there may be people that have some extra expertise or something from outside of town that we, and we can choose not to put some people on the committee. Of course, we appoint them. But if there was somebody from outside of town that we thought, you know, would be really helpful on the committee, that we would have that option. We'd say we have to do that.
Okay.
It could be all Hardwick or if someone, yeah.
Yeah.
Just wanted to be part of it and lived in a community that doesn't have an Equity Committee, you know?
Yeah, okay.
Because we're sort of the central shopping and.
Somebody who was critical to the committee moved to Greensboro.
Or Walden.
Or Walden.
Whatever. We just thought we didn't want to be closed about that.
Okay.
Because the community is a wider thing than a Hardwick resident is, you know? The community is bigger than just the Hardwick residents.
Yes, yeah.
In a lot of ways, sort of like how the library, you know, Hardwick residents got to vote on the library, but the library is used by the wider community. So we just thought it would be more inclusive to allow for other.
To allow for but not require.
Right.
If, if the committee is also just advisory committee, so it's not like they have, like, they're likely doing things that then affect Hardwick residents, you know, financially as well. I don't know if I had a point about it, they're not, like, they're directly doing things. Like, it's, like, say, designing, you know, zoning board would be directly affecting Hardwick residents who are applying for, you know, permit or something, which is more informed by advisory committee. So it's not just direct, correctly Hardwick.
Yeah.
But also, people feel like there should be a method, you know, I'm not, I'm not 100% on that one. One question I had about it was that sometimes nine people seems like a lot of people on committee.
Yeah.
Do you think that, that's asking for trouble to have that many people? Or should we just get, and again, we don't have to, for nine people, I think we should lower that number.
Given the kind of work that this committee is going to take on or appears to take on, it may be dividing itself into a number of subcommittees. And so therefore, having a maximum of nine might actually prove to be very useful, particularly if you don't insist that there be nine. You could start off with four or five. And if, as the workload grows, you, you have the option of growing to nine. So I think that's not a bad thing, so long as it's not a requirement. Because finding nine people 10 years from now could be a problem.
Yeah, it, in section one, it says, "The minimum number of active members shall be three, maximum shall be nine."
Yeah.
Does it, Kaylee, does it help if we just say the Select Board may appoint members who are not residents of Hardwick? Should we put a number in there, like up to three members who are not residents of Hardwick? Or something like that? Does that help define that better?
The only reason, the only reason why a percentage makes sense is that if you say a third can be non-Hardwick residents, then that's three and it's also one, right? So if you've got three members, that's one member. If you've got nine, that's three.
I believe that's as possible.
I think.
But whatever standard, I, it was just a question, it was just a question.
Yeah. And also, I mean, in the example of saying you could have a three from out of town, it's possible to have only three people on the committee, so that could be everyone.
Yeah, that's no good.
So it's better to leave it as a majority. I also have a question about, under Article Five, Section One, second sentence that says, "It shall be the duty of the chairperson to hire, train, and supervise volunteers and part-time employees," or designate someone to do so. It sounds as if you're empowering the chair to hire part-time employees, which.
On what budget?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, that was part of it, just in Recreation Committee One, and so.
REC has that?
Yeah.
Let's just remove it.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
I was just sputtering.
I was proposing that we just remove that sentence because it, it's not, it doesn't make or break anything. And the, the committee's gonna be reporting to the Select Board. So whatever they, whenever they want to bring in a facilitator or hire, so to speak, hire someone, they're gonna have, have a discussion with the Select Board before that happens, I would assume.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. They said, I think. Yeah, I think that's how it makes sense, yeah.
Have we removed section six of Article Five?
I have.
Is it Article?
Article Five, Article Three.
It's actually Article Three.
Oh, Article Three, yes.
Hang on a second.
That's the stipend. We're removing the stipend.
Oh, okay, yep. Okay, so removing the stipend and then removing that last sentence in Article five, section one.
Yep.
Okay. And that's, that's it for changes so far, ready?
Yeah.
My only other small edit is just, is Lucian, of the duties and responsibilities of members. I'm just wondering if this is a place to reference the resolution? Or if we, if a goal of these responsibilities was to reflect? I was just wondering if you could talk about those, those duties and responsibilities a little bit more? Or could we, could we have it be a little bit open in terms of the first few to be more just around kind of upholding the resolution? Or maybe upholding is too strong of a word, but helping us realize the resolution, the equity resolution.
Oh, okay. What section is that, Kaylee?
It's the duties and responsibilities of members.
Article seven.
Article seven.
Oh, okay. Okay. Oh, I see. So this kind of does reference down to the resolution, but it doesn't, not, it doesn't say so explicitly. Do you think you should be more explicit, just explicit, say, reference back to the resolution?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, because there's a lot in the resolution. I'm wondering if we're, we're giving a committee a lot, as Liz was saying. If we reference the resolution, then it, then it's still, then we know that the committee is doing what we are hoping that it will. And then, but we're kind of giving them a little more space to.
So I have a proposal.
Sherri's got a proposal.
For the third sentence in the Article seven, is that right? I don't, I'm not good with my Roman numerals. So the third one is, "To work for the benefit of the community and help develop town educational programs about equity, period." And assist the Select Board in helping to realize the Equity for All Resolution. I could put the date in there, but that's what it's called, just to have that be part of it. That sounds fine?
That sounds, that sounds good to me.
Thanks for putting that into words, Sherri.
Sure, that's good. So, ready for a motion?
Yeah.
I make the motion that we accept the Hardwick Equity Committee policy as amended tonight in the meeting, removing section six.
Article three, section six.
So Article three, section six, removing that all entirely. And then removing the second sentence in Article five, section one. And the addition of a sentence to Article seven, the third duty and responsibility of members.
I'll second that. Oh, no, Lucian should second it.
Let him do it.
Lucian's got it.
Okay, any more, any more discussion?
Lucian for the second is out here.
Yep.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
That was a late aye, okay. So motion carries. Thank you, Lucian and Kaylee especially, but thank you, everyone.
Eric, can I just have a really quick addition to item four? Is this the time to, just the general conversation?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay. I'm just wondering about, there was a brief conversation. I had asked Casey where the resolution was on the website, mainly because Crasberry, the Crasbers Select Board has passed a similar resolution. It's also establishing an equity committee. And so they asked to see what we were doing. A great example of two communities working together, but I couldn't find it on the website. So the question is, also, if we're referring to it in our committee, how we're making the resolution available to the community? And so I just wanted to bring that up. We don't necessarily have to decide about it right now. But just so we all know where it is and how to.
Can I, can I comment, Eric?
Yeah.
Amanda and I talked about this earlier this week. As it turned out, it was in, within all of the packet information for that particular meeting. So what we've talked about doing, I'm not sure if it's, has it processed? Okay, excellent. So now it does exist as its own attachment, and we can get the link to everybody. So somebody can go right to it, and it'll be available as a PDF item if somebody wants to see it.
But if you're, so I was going to bring this up in new business. I just wonder if we want to think about how the website is organized? And assume that people going to the website for a policy information or a resolution, which is technically a policy also? No? I don't know?
No.
Anyway, maybe, I find it kind of hard to imagine. I wouldn't look there. I wouldn't look in the minutes to find the attachment of the, of a, of the signed policy or of the resolution. I would go to the heading that says policies and, what is it, policies and?
Procedures.
Procedures?
Hey, I have an idea about.
Yeah?
Hey, I have an idea about this. So can we just move on the, on the Hardwick Equity Committee policy? And what if it's attached to them? And we were re-referenced the resolution in the policy, but it makes sense if it would be there.
Then, then it could be in both places. That would, I, I think that's good. Then it could be in both places. I just think, I want to make it easier to find rather than burying it in the website, you know?
Yep. So also, it occurs to me that most, or I think most of our committees, maybe all of them, have a little section in the website. And so soon, as we form this committee, we could request that this Equity Committee also have a section, and that the resolution could live there as well.
So we could just talk to Maya about that. I just, yeah.
Yeah, to Sherri's point, you know, it was hard to find, it was. So we made that initial step of making sure it's available as an attachment. Just my quick response on this is, we don't miss, we don't have resolutions as their own place posted on the website. That's all. No, just that's what it is.
We don't yet, but maybe.
Right, it could be an adjustment.
It just might be something that we want to look at in the way things are organized. Just because people looking at this community to potentially move to it or want to know what's going on. I mean, I, yeah, I wouldn't, it wouldn't be the first thing I'd do to go. I mean, I remember fifteen years ago, or whatever it was, when we were moving here, I went to look for Hardwick website. A, it didn't exist. B, so I called and I just, I wanted to find out whether there was broadband. I wanted to find out what the, you know. So you go and you look at the town report, because that's all you can find, you know, online at that time. So I just, I want to make it easier for people to access this kind of information, because I think it's important that they are able to find out this stuff about our community.
Yep. Yeah, so I think it becomes kind of a larger, a larger discussion because there are potentially a lot of, there's a lot of information, and we only add more. We tend not to take any away. So, I mean, as a general, it's a larger organizational discussion, I guess.
Right, or web thing that we talked with Maya about, and she's done other town websites. So it may be that there's just a different way to organize that, but, yeah. I don't know.
Yeah.
So can I just add really quickly? Lucian's idea is a great one to add the resolutions, because my other question is, now that we've formed this committee, it's just poof, open to anybody to apply? Are we, do we have a timeline for when we want to have that be open and available?
So typically, what we would do is we would declare that we have, you know, nine openings on the, on the, potentially up to nine.
Up to nine, yeah.
On the Equity Committee, and we would accept letters of interest up through some date. You know, usually we do two weeks. I don't know if that's, I don't know what people want to do. If, if, if it's too new and we want to let it get out a little ways, or, you know, give it a longer time for response on something like this. I don't know.
Well, I, I had a couple of thoughts.
No, go ahead.
I had a couple of thoughts. I'd like to break it here. I was thinking that we, I mean, we can appoint committee, committee members up to nine. And so we could, we could, I think it'd be good to give, you know, two weeks or three weeks, whatever you need for the initial round. But if we don't have enough members, then we could appoint more as we go to fill in the committee. But then the other thing that I was thinking was that we should probably, that I think normally advertise for these things. Somebody might already said that, I'm going to break here. So we might want to write, I think we want to write a fairly good, I don't know, like a bit of a description of what we're looking for in the committee member. I think that helps the committee, you know, function, you know, just make sure that people know that they should have some, you know, some experience or some expertise in this, or some commitment to it, kind of thing. So I just want to put that out there, that it maybe should just be, like, we should just put some effort into that.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Well, and Lucian's already done a lot of that work already with the description of the duties and responsibilities. So there, yeah. So we need to do a posting, but that includes that, what those duties and responsibilities of the committee members would be, and invite people to apply through the town manager's office. No?
I think so.
I think, I think I heard you right here, you're saying to take the responsibilities down, I think we just have.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah, I didn't think of it as, as they direct, you're, you're such a, you're verbatim? Or direct in a paragraph?
In a paragraph, of course, but, you know, still, like putting a little job description down. I mean, it's, that's, that's what we're looking for in our members, right?
Right, right, right. Yep, yep, yeah, that's true.
Uh, okay. So are we gonna, do, do people want to go ahead now and put a timeframe around that? Or do you want to, do, somebody want to work on? Lucian, do you, do you feel strongly about working on a description before we post? I mean, we could just leave it that.
Will you create a post?
I'm happy.
So he doesn't have to?
I'm happy to.
So Kaylee's volunteering to create the language for the posting.
Okay, great.
And then, do, do we want to, so typically, we only do, we, we would do it out roughly two weeks so that it would coincide with our next Select Board meeting. Do you want to leave this one a bit longer?
Why don't we push it to the September seventeenth Select Board meeting so that it gives a little bit more time? And we can also discuss the, the post will be done potentially by our next meeting so we could, we could talk about it again.
There we go.
Can you repeat that, come on, I already heard that.
So Sherri just said that, so Kaylee will work on the, the writing up the posting and will aim for having letters in on, before our September seventeenth meeting.
Which is, there's a.
So the posting would go out, but, well, you're saying, so then you're saying the posting would happen right after our Sept, our first September meeting, the September.
The September third meeting. We would have it at least ready so that we could post it. Do you think that's okay? September third?
Sure.
I mean, we could have it ready and then, and discuss it that night and then.
I don't know, you would know that we need to discuss it. I mean, I think whenever it's ready.
Well, we could just announce it, maybe, as a part of the, you know, just like reports or whatever.
So what if Kay, what if Kaylee just works with Sean to get it posted whenever, whenever they come?
And then creating that September seventeenth as a deadline for submitting the interest.
By whatever, sometime before our Select Board meeting.
So we could potentially.
Actually, the day before would be nice, right? So that we could read them.
So the sixteenth?
Yeah.
Yeah, by September sixteenth.
All right.
So just to, just to make sure I'm doing what the board thinks I am.
I would recommend the fifteenth.
Fifteenth, okay.
By three o'clock. You're kind of writing the ad. We need the duties and responsibilities, absolutely. Because questions come on that right out of the gates.
Yeah.
So I'm going to draft a posting which captures the duties and responsibilities in the Equity Committee formation that Lucian put together and send that to Sean to review and post.
Just copy Casey, because she's going to be involved in this.
And Casey.
Yeah.
Is everyone comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Yep.
That sounds good.
Yeah, it sounds great.
Great.
Awesome.
Thanks for all your work on that, Lucian.
That's great, thank you. All right, we're going to move. All right, we're going to move on to item five, which is Select Board to Discuss Implementation Process Procedure for the Recommendations from the Pedestrian Traffic Safety Task Force. So we had that presentation last time about the findings of the task force and. So. I guess my takeaway from that is a lot of it had to do with changing parking spots and crosswalks and things that have paint on the road. And the nice thing about winter is it takes all the paint off the road. And so next spring seems to me a great time to implement those things, because you're starting fresh.
Well, if we're going to remove parking spaces, that would be low hanging fruit that we could remove before next spring. Just saying.
Yeah.
And then we did budget for at least one crosswalk sign.
Okay. That's in our current budget, yeah.
Yeah. So maybe we can get that on order.
Yeah.
Find out, you know, I mean, that, that seems to be a low hanging fruit to me.
Okay. I would say removing parking spots is easier in the spring when the lines are gone, but.
Well, there's a compounding, there's a compounding factor, and that is the pedestrian bridge, the suspension bridge is down for the count. I think we need to consider that right now. It does impact how people get back downtown, and just there's that extra hurdle of having to walk around those blocks to get downtown. I think that does impact us potentially taking away parking spots.
Right now.
Does that make sense, Sherri?
We're still talking about, yes, sure, I guess so. But we're still talking about the flashing crosswalk sign.
Yeah, we're just talking about parking spots now.
So we, yeah, so flash the, flashing crosswalk, and that's one, you press the button and it flashes, is that what it is?
There are no more different models.
Yeah.
It might be.
I'm not sure what got priced, but it just has an actual light that flashes.
Do you know what it is?
It's an LED one. The last time we got one, it's a strobe one.
And you have to press the button and it flashes?
So they're going more fancy and get the motion ones, and there's all.
Oh, pressing the button.
It just keeps going on price, more so than going on.
But what was priced out was the, press the button and it flashes?
Yeah. So that, you know, that crosswalk is still being used even though the bridge is not being crossed. That crosswalk is still being heavily used as it always is.
Sure.
I mean.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I was commenting.
I just, I'm just hoping that we're, we're not going to, you know, we've worked on that for a year and a half. I'm hoping that we're not going to just wait till spring on everything.
Oh.
Because I, I would lose my mind, I think. If we're not going to do anything after we did all that work and, and focused on, you know, improving safety.
Yeah.
Really?
Well, I don't, I don't think you should lose your mind, Sherri. You guys did a good job. But we're also talking about a lot of money that we're going to have to budget to do what we want to do for next year.
Right, and all that planning, we start talking about that now instead of waiting until next year and reviewing these recommendations. That's, that's the thing.
But we did budget for one of those things.
Yeah, we did. And that's what I'm suggesting, that we get that, go ahead and keep moving with that, at least.
So maybe Sean and Tom could scope out and make sure that what, what we priced last time is still available at that price and.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm also wondering if it's an opportunity, and Sherri's saying we still have, other than today, a decent chunk of fall left. Is there anything that would be not super expensive that we could do to kind of prototype some of these ideas? So that way it's not a huge shock when the parking right by the corner goes away? Like, could we, for the fall, put up some straw bales and just kind of do some visual things that I'm sure some people would help donate for that? Or could we test out some different signs? Dave presented a bunch. Or, or could we test out some different signs? Dave presented a bunch of different great parking sign options. Those are all things that we could do in the winter to really figure out and be ready for the, for the spring. Right after that presentation, I started thinking about where are their parking signs? And it's really hard to know unless you were born here where the parking is.
Yeah.
That seems like a low hanging fruit that we could at least start to think about. Where do those go? What do they look like? But the, the local motion has done a great job coming up with some really low cost, basically prototypes of, of what a bump out might, might feel like, or what a colorful crossway walk might feel like. And they're, you know, it's with chalk paint or with whatever, as long as we're within, you know, as long as we're maintaining safety. Maybe there's some things that we could come up with for the fall to do that kind of get the town thinking about some changes that are gonna happen next year.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I, yeah, I think that'd be great, because I think that we need to have a little, it's, I, I think the task force did a great job coming up with the recommendations of, of things to do. But I think we need, and solicited input from folks downtown. And I think now we also need to say, all right, so here was the outcome of all that work is this, these recommendations. I think we have to have a, I'd like to have a fairly public process about those things before we start necessarily taking away parking spots. I mean, I really think like the bump house, that's a great example where if we could do a temporary thing to simulate a bump out and see what that's like, that'd be a great thing to try for, to stimulate the public discussion. And I, I think that's one of the bigger safety things, really.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think, I think trying to think that was totally, um, yeah, do a temporary thing is getting folk, you're really gonna do it, I think, right?
And parking signs, yeah, the, yeah. I don't know. When you go, when I go somewhere, like, not, don't know where to park them, I was looking for that big blue P. Right, with the H, you know, and the arrow, and that kind of guy. It's like looking for the big H if you're looking for the hospital. So, yeah, yeah, think about where those could be placed. And actually, not having a swing, having a swing and bridge added commission temporarily doesn't affect how you drive to that parking lot. It only affects how you walk out of it, so we can still consider it.
Right. Maybe it'll actually help people start to figure out where that is. I don't know.
Yeah. So.
So we can, you know, at the Town Manager's oper- office and with Tom, we can, you know, we can definitely look at some of those low cost items and, you know, try to implement if the Select Board agreeable. That's, you know, that's some of the things we can do. Just, you know, if there's something that is a lower cost or low cost, try to make a change.
Yep.
I guess, just one of the thing, I guess why I'm a little bit anxious about the, I did serve on the task force, obviously, I'm a part of it. But a little bit anxious about, I understand, you know, what the task force put on the table with eliminating of certain spots and the logic for that. But I just have some angst about some of the downtown businesses, they're really, it's tight right now. I mean, this is a given, you know, it's a known statement, it's a little bit tight on the operations side. And I just think it's, you know, you go and start pulling away some of the spots just right now, at this time, with the state emergency on, in full aid season, just, it's really gonna be a challenge for some of those businesses, is my opinion. Maybe I'm wrong. But that's just something I've been thinking about. So that's all.
But moving that handicap from in front of rehab, from, by the cables down to the other end of that block seems like something that is easy to do, doesn't cost anything.
I agree with you. I think there are some, that's an example, low hanging fruit. And people coming out of the post office, the visual line there is awful.
It's awful.
So, I, I agree. That's it. I mean, I don't wanna say too much, obviously, that's the Select Board level.
There are a few things we can do.
Okay.
Before next spring. That's all.
Yeah. But I, I, yeah.
Some things we'll wait, then we'll try to plan and see whether there's other resources for them, et cetera. But some things we can do.
Okay, so, so the plan is that Sean and Tom are gonna look into the flashing pedestrian sign? And then the, the priority for that would be the crosswalk by the swing bridge? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and then you're also gonna look into other things that could be implemented easily and cheaply?
Like that moving of that handicap space and.
Yeah. I'm still confused about the handicap space, but I'll ask offline.
Just go down and take a look at it. Yeah, it's crazy.
I, I'm just confused about why it's there at all. Like, is it, is, are there, is it mandatory to have a certain number of handicap spots? Or what makes one?
Yeah, it may not, it may be a hangover from an old use of that building. I mean, we don't know, really.
Could we eliminate it?
Or, or is there, is it really, I don't know, it just seems a little bit random to me.
It's almost venue.
It's all, okay. There we go, that's the answer. All right.
You think it was-
Well, it should always be there.
And whether people use it, I don't know.
I don't know either. Do you know, Tom?
No.
Okay.
We just hate them, sir.
Yeah.
Well, it does get used, I know that.
Oh, okay.
As a handicap spot.
As a handicap spot.
Well then, yeah, so then probably should leave it.
Have one somewhere. Were you gonna say something, Kaylee?
Yeah, so I am new to this implementation process, but, so I'm just kinda curious. What does Select Board role in, in kind of approving, or obviously, we've approved a budget for certain items that'll be covered by this, by this, by what the planning commission has provided to us? But what is our kind of role in deciding?
We decide.
Okay. So if that's the case, that's what I kind of assumed, but I wanted to make sure. I would love to see, whether it's at the next Select Board meeting or whatever is realistic, what the, what the options are for what we just said. I mean, the handicap, painting the handicap, moving the handicap spot seems like a pretty, pretty basic thing that we can do. But the, the press buttons, I feel like there're gonna be a lot of different options in terms of, and Tom's already done work on this. I'd love to see the budget and where we are, where we are in the budget, how much we have left. 'Cause if, depending on what we order, and it's hard to order things right now, as Erin was telling us, like, maybe we can do more. It's hard for me to really know where to start if I don't know where our budget, budget is, so.
We're only six weeks in, so just a caution there. We'll have some numbers. So we, I mean, we'll have, we can, you know, it's just a little bit of a timestamp. But, you know, we're trying our best on all of these things to watch the numbers. So we can, we can report what we had budgeted under, I guess it's Public Works Improvement, I forget the exact line item. But we can, you know, we can just talk about what it is we do have there.
Okay.
And we have certain things we know are coming at us. So one example just came out tonight. And that is, you know, we had already been talking about for this year doing at least one of the LED push button crosswalk signs. We had a ballpark of what that cost. That cost might have changed a little bit. And the point I'll make now is, you know, we're, we're pretty careful about detailing things out, but we don't necessarily have everything mapped out. We have the capability to be flexible within the year for the good of a conversation like this, right?
Great.
Right. And then planning, because we'll do our budget for next year in coming months. And so planning for the possibility of a need for a different paint, a higher cost paint, you know, whatever, et cetera.
Solar feedback, solar run, feedback indicators for speed, you know, any of these things.
Or, or bike racks, that, that kind of stuff, that would go into the next budget. But we can't include it if we don't know how much it is.
And were you further wondering if you would like to see, think, or maybe I'm reading into it, what, what I'm thinking? But it'd be great to see, like a, maybe not a brochure, but like a, some sort of representation of what the crosswalk sign looks like and what it costs compared to what our budget is.
Correct.
Okay. So don't just buy it, let us know first.
Yeah.
'Cause some, that, a lot of times we just say, you know.
Just do it.
Just do it. But it sounds like this time we're saying, we'd like to see it. We'd like to have a little more input.
And something else that's gonna need to be budgeted for is the fence over there by Village Diner. That's, that's an inconsequential installation.
Just a caution on, you guys, I don't disagree with you having a look at it, but we do need to be a little bit careful about. We can't get into this procedure of you've gotta approve everything, right?
No.
Right, right.
I think you guys know this, so.
Yep.
And you just wanna make sure it makes sense, 'cause we put a lot of energy and effort into this. Let's make sure it works for the communities where I'm getting back, right?
Yeah, I'm not.
Or there are options.
Well, we're, really, we do our best at the operations level to spend, economically, spend efficiently and get a good product and make it work. So hopefully, we can have maybe one or two options.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe we come back with, look, this is what the standard is around here, and it does work well. And we see, just, we'll, we'll do our best to hit the marks and we see, okay, this is gonna work. Not to influence your opinion ahead of time, but I think we can, you know, we'll get the information in order so you can, you know, see what we got coming at us.
Yeah, I just, to clarify, I, I, there's, there were so many things that were presented during that presentation, which is amazing. And as I believe Sherry put at the last meeting, they're all priorities, right? We were talking about low hanging fruit. We were talking about, what are things that are more expensive? And what are things that are, things that we could do, like straw bales, that could kind of just be a stopgap? I just, I'm gonna, I don't, I just, for the record, I don't wanna approve everything that was made for the planning commission for that plan. That's all I wanted to say. I think, I think we totally trust the record to do that. I just, I was just curious as to what the process was for.
Okay. Excellent. So, moving along. Uh, so, where are we? That is, we're time for Select Board reports. Sherry?
Well, you know, there's nothing happening at the townhouse right now. We had census training in there, and that seemed to work out okay, 'cause they could, you know, they had small groups and they could spread out. It was very nice that the lawn was mowed yesterday when we had our meeting last night outside of the Neck Arts Group.
Yeah.
I don't know. What else?
Great. Any other reports? Just to echo what Sean said, I also went down the rail trail today partway, and, you know, it's definitely, definitely looking good. So if people wanna start exploring, at least you're not gonna fall through those two bridges anymore heading to Starberg.
A few holes along the way.
There are other places to fall in.
You might, but.
Tom got rid of one of them. So thank you, Tom.
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, new business? A one small thing for your group, or are you in?
We're supposed to direct stuff to you, mate.
So, as I am walking between downtown and my house, I, there's a section just below the high school, between the high school-
Are you listening, Tom?
Between the high school and the police station, where the vegetation is creeping out and kind of, uh, coming into the sidewall. And from the wall and then uphill from the wall.
Upward three.
Uh, downhill, yeah. Yes, we, yes. And I was just thinking about school starting up in a couple of weeks and, well, maybe. And the, and, and I will say also generally, like, holy cow, the, the mowing and everything this year has been really good. But I just noticed that there's a lot, if, if there's opportunity to whack that back before, before school.
We got a few spots we're keeping our eyes on, right, Tom? Waiting for it to cool down a bit, honestly.
Sure. All right, that's my, any more new business or old business? Did we have a motion to go into executive session to discuss appointment for the ATD?
So, Lucian?
Second.
Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Lucian, you said aye?
Aye.
Okay.